I apologize. Call the special city council meeting for the City of International Falls to order for Monday, September 26 at 9:30 a.m. And the purpose of the meeting is to consider a application for an exempt permit to conduct a raffle to be held by BACUS AB in support of a citizen in the need of health care. Also, to review and discuss the proposed revisions to the preliminary 2017 budget and property tax levy. And third, to adopt a resolution approving the budget, preliminary budget and the levy, as it may be amended. So, start with the resolution to agree to approve the Citizens for BACUS AB application.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Councilor Jaxson.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion on the motion to adopt the resolution. Are you none question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted and permit is approved. Thank you. Put item two on the agenda, and that's to discuss the proposed revisions to the preliminary 2017 budget and property tax levy. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my counsel. I try and keep my comments brief. Since we had last met, you had provided some direction as a Budget and Finance Committee that we try and limit the proposed levy increase to 5 percent. So, as a result, we had to make significant cuts from the department requests. And we did, in fact, do that. And what we've provided for you is a summary sheet that shows where we made cuts, and I'll go through that briefly. And then a copy of the proposed resolution that would set the preliminary tax levy that's collectible in 2017. And attached to that is an exhibit A, which shows some of the detail in terms of where the money is budgeted, both for expenditures and revenues, and then how we've proposed transfers, which is a format that we've used in all the previous years that, and actually preceding me being with the city. So, looking at the revision since the Budget and Finance Committee meeting met on September 13th, you can see we've shown at the top where the property tax levy-supported funds are. In 2016, we showed what the levy amounts were. We showed what the new proposals were for 2017, and the, and then what the difference was between the two years. So, we're proposing that the total levy for 2017 be $2,349,519. And that would be an increase of $111,852, which is about $31 less than the maximum, or less than the 5 percent threshold that you had established for us. Where did we make those changes? You can see in the middle of the page, adjustments since the September 13th, 2016 meeting, we reduced the professional services line item and administration by $2,000. The police motor fuels by $3,000. We increased the police department general supplies, but that was basically moving something out of 402, that was in reserve for capital outlay, into general supplies. So, that's a net, no net gain in terms of the amount of money we're raising. You can see in the 101 fund, we've included the $5,000 that the council wanted to have included for the local match, for the grant application to do the restoration of Second Creek. So, that was an addition of $5,000. For the partnership organizations, this year, the city had received a request for $5,000 from Borderlands Substance Abuse Court. And that's a request that we've never received in the past, and it was for a total of 5,000. We're suggesting that that amount be reduced $3,000, so they'd still receive $2,000, but it would be $3,000 less than what they requested. For Fund 211 and Park and Recreation, we're correcting an allocation. At the first meeting, I believe it was on August 2nd, it might have been the 16th meeting, the Recreation Commission had recommended a total cost from the city of $72,000. We had $71,500 in there, so we added that additional 500, which we hadn't shown at the last meeting. The Public Works Permanent Improvement Funds, or Departments, rather, and there's a number of them that were impacted, we reduced that by $120,000. I spoke previously about the capital outlay. We moved that up in the general supplies for police. So, that capital outlay fund was reduced $1,000 in the police department. Fire Reserve for Capital Outlay was reduced $100,000. They still include $100,000 amount for their capital outlay to set aside for equipment acquisition in the future, or potentially remodeling the existing fire hall to make some needed improvements. And finally, in 402, Public Works Reserve for Capital Outlay, you can see that there is a reduction of $337,500. The combined total of those additions and deletions, or reductions, was a reduction, was a reduction of $560,000. And that's what got us to our proposed levy of $2,349,519. Bottom there, we just identified some general notes. In the 101 fund, we helped finance a number of partnership agencies. That a total amount was $127,000 in 2016. It's up to $130,000. That increase in $3,000 a thousand was for the July 4th committee. And then $2,000 for the additional amount for the Borderlands Substance Abuse Court. Second Creek, you can see the 5,000, which I talked about. We show that in 2017, we'll be making a contribution of $20,000 for the contribution we're making to Rainy River Community College to help fund the nursing instructor. At the last committee meeting, we talked about some estimated costs of up to $7,000. It was estimated between $5 and $7,000 to put in a gravel parking lot, do some clearing and grubbing at the Donahue property. So, we've included $7,000 for that, and that's, that's included as part of this proposed budget. For local government aid, the 101 fund, you can see that the difference between 2016 and 2017, the amount that the Minnesota Department of Revenue had certified for a levy, or I'm sorry, a local government aid increase was $6,842. As a side note, had the, the tax bill been approved by the legislature, it would have been over a $92,000 increase. So, that was a big, big impact for us and our general fund. It would have been very nice to have those additional monies to help fund some of the future permanent improvement and capital outlay items that we had. And then finally, just for the Water and Sewer Fund, for the Storm Sewer Maintenance, which is part of the Water and Sewer Fund, Fund 601, there's about a $36,349 increase for that stormwater cost. And so, we've just identified what those amounts are in 2016 versus 2017 Water and Sewer Fund. But that does not include, those total dollar amounts does not include the amount for Storm Sewer, which is what we finance with the levy. And you can see up on the top box there that the 601 Water and Sewer for Storm Sewer Maintenance only had been in. Those are the changes that we had made. And in this, in the sheets that you got, because we've gone over, over those three or four previous Budget and Finance Committee meetings, we haven't include all the line item detail. That will be included and provided to you with those cover sheets that we had worked on. But this is a summary of the changes that were made, and we're asking that the council consider adoption of the draft resolution showing that levy increase. The resolution also requires that we identify when we're going to have our Truth and Taxation Public Input Meeting. And we're proposing, at least as a staff, that that meeting be at 6 o'clock on Monday, December 5th. Monday, December 5th is when we normally have our first council meeting of the month. And the state law requires that that not be held before 6:00 p.m., so we're suggesting it be held at 6:00 p.m. on Monday, December 5th. That's included in the resolution. We're anticipating that if there's any changes that the council would make based on that public input, that we would have an opportunity to do that. And we would propose that the council would finally adopt the 2017 budget and levy that would be collectible in 2017 at your second meeting on December 19th. Resolution lays out those requirements and that we would have to take action on. And then the final information in your packet is the Exhibit A, which is an attachment to the resolution. And you can see in the specific funds what the amount of expenditures are, what the revenues are, and then where we're proposing transfers between various funds and the increases. I think part of the interesting information on this is what we've tried to do is lay out what the partnership agencies are, so you can see the amounts that you would, that they would be funded for 2017, and that's in the lower left corner. And then the lower right corner shows the history of what our levies have been, and what our LGA numbers have been over the last four years. With that, I don't know that there's any other general information I'd like to provide. Betty's here to help answer any questions that the council may have regarding the proposed budget. The, as you know, we can, we can decrease the levy and the budget, but we can't increase it from this amount that we set here at the preliminary stage. So, we involve significant reductions from what the department has requested, so I hope we don't see any more reductions between now and December, but have that option if the council feels it's necessary to do so.
Your pleasure with the resolution, adopting the preliminary budget and the levy.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kayler to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Question?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I will not accept this budget. If you read in the paper, the county is increasing their levy 5 percent, but they're actually dropping, 5 percent of the dollars are increased. But they're actually dropping their levy rate on county residents because their tax base has grown so much. What is our tax base for 2017? We don't know yet, do we?
Not for 2017, and I did, I do have a handout I could provide for you from the assessor's office. Says, "I apologize for the inconvenience. We have generally, we generally have this information available sooner. The computer system has been updated, and I have a checklist I need to go through. Once that is done, the reports will be generated, and I will send them to you." And that was sent at 8:08 this morning. And I, I do have information that I can distribute, that I got from her for 2016. In fact, I will do that.
That really does.
And I provided that information to you on the 15th.
My point being that, given Boise's reevaluation down by $3 million, I would suspect, of course, I don't know, but, because we don't have the information yet, but I would suspect that our tax, net tax capacity has dropped, which means we're not going to be raising the levy. We're going to be raising the levy more than 5 percent if our tax base is less on people's individual homes. Okay? But we don't know what that is. I reject, on principle, that we start funding county functions. I will not support a budget that supports giving money to the court system. The county board receives money from the state to operate the court system. I will not support this budget that has admittedly a small amount, but it is a matter of principle. And I don't want to set a policy precedent to be contributing to the court system, so I will not vote for this. And it's $2,000 I object to on principle. Secondly, the reason that we're cutting, I want people to understand a few things before we just merrily move along here. Account 612, the airport, you have revenues of $780,500. I distinctly recall, and we can go back and play the tape if we need to, but I recall that the auditors said in our audit report that the airport funding cannot be presented this way. We need to be showing a transfer, yeah, they said that. The transfer from the general fund to the airport needs to be shown on the financial statements and is not being shown on this, this report. So, you need to show $780 from the general fund to the airport. And then you need to increase the revenues to the general fund to show that fully, transparently, and completely. And thirdly, we cut capital improvements by $560,000. And the reason we did, the reason we cut city infrastructure by $560,000 is because we're putting $500,000 into the airport. And that is the choices we made, and I voted for it, and so did everybody else on this council. But I want people to know what we're doing. Our priority right now is to do that airport and put everything else on hold, essentially. And people need to know that, because that's what you call transparency in government and in decision-making. But I will not vote for this budget. Take the $2,000 out, and I will.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
One point of clarification is for taxes payable in 2016, or this year, is where the city did, and the council made the choice to revert $500,000 as a local match for the airport terminal project. So, that was done in 2016. That same amount isn't continuing to go into the airport fund for 2017.
Well, then, it should be showing a drawdown of reserves here. Increase decreases reserves. Yeah, it should, because if we're drawing down reserves, we're not putting money, we're not putting current revenues into the airport. We're taking money that we allocated last year, 2016, then it should be a drawdown of reserves, shouldn't it be?
No, it was, it was budgeted, it was a budgeted amount for 2016.
And the $780,000 for the airport is on Exhibit A. I don't know if you've looked at Exhibit A.
I'm looking at Exhibit A. The $780 in revenue, what is that?
$780,000.
I know, but where is it coming from?
It's coming from the city.
No?
Because we're the fiscal agent, we have to show that. Please.
Yes.
Maybe we want to come up to the microphone so that...
Isn't it the $500,000 and the $280,000 that we give them every year?
No.
It's not, the $780 doesn't equal the 500 plus the $280?
No.
Oh.
It's coincidental that.
Huh?
It's coincidental that the numbers are exactly.
Okay.
Right. But Cynthia is right in one aspect of it. On Exhibit A, it doesn't show in Fund 101, the transfer of the $279,715 that we budgeted in the general fund for the airport.
So, that needs to be a transfer.
That needs to come and show as a transfer, and then that $780 in revenues on the Airport 612 fund should show as a transfer in, and that number should be reduced by that amount for the revenue. Because we're transferring it within our, our bookkeeping system.
That, that's what we're contributing.
Yes.
The reason it's showing at $780 is because we're the fiscal agent for the city and the county.
That is correct. So, all the revenues for all, airport as a whole are all in there.
Yes.
They should not be in our financials. They should be separately stated.
They are, in the line 612 for the airport fund.
But even though we're the fiscal agent, they, the airport should not be wrapped up with our financial presentations. That's what, that's, when Larson Ellen left, they separated out the airport. We asked for that, and they finally took it out. They should have, anyway. I, we'll go back and revisit that, but...
The airport is a fund within the city's financials.
It has been for...
It's a separate fund.
For 60 years, it's been that way.
Anyway, so the, with the $500,000 in other revenue for the airport is coming from where? Well, that's the operating budget.
Correct. And it's our $280,000, the county's $280,000, then they have...
Moneys that come from the state.
Two, $300,000 from the state, their PFCs, their rents and leases.
Okay. So, that is not being reflected in our books, correct? None of that is being shown here, all the other revenues to the airport?
It is, in that $780,000 in your Exhibit A.
But the, the million dollars that they get a year, that's not showing. The expenditures for the airport remodel aren't showing here either.
No, that's in 2017.
That's it. This is the 2017 budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, the million dollars that they received from the city and the county was in 2016. You're not going to see that right here.
Okay.
This is monies to be spent in 2017.
Correct.
Okay. So, the $500,000, though, we didn't spend last year because they didn't get the project going until this, till 2017. We haven't spent that money, have we?
Some monies are being expended now. They've got considerable amount of work that's being undertaken now. But you're correct, some of it will carry over in the 17. We don't, we haven't anticipated what that amount is, but the monies will be paid out of the increase in the fund balance that we contributed to the 2016 budget, as a result of the 2016 budget.
Okay. So, what we have going on here is just the airport operations, that's it. There is no capital improvement reflection in this budget of the airport. So, the books aren't totally, and that's correct. We do not want to fully reflect the airport in our books. There are capital improvement projects and that, I don't think we want to add to our budget. That was per the auditors, that we keep all that separate, right?
Operating budget of the airport is in Fund 612. Yes.
And then everything else is off the books. We're not looking at that. The capital improvements, the money that we're spending for the terminal remodel.
They are in a subcategory under the airport.
But they're not on our books.
They're in our financials, yes.
But not in our budget.
No, because they're not a budget, they're not budgeted items, they're not...
Okay. So...
We didn't, it was not necessary to budget any additional monies this year for the project.
Correct.
So, the $780,500 is just the operating budget for the airport? Now, I'm clear. I thought that was the 500 plus the 280. Okay. All right. Sorry.
Further questions or discussion with regard to the resolution or the budget?
I have two questions, City Administrator. One is, have we received the budget from the North Koochiching Sanitary District?
No.
Thank you. Secondly, not that it was going to, it was going to reflect anything in the, in the levy, it may have allowed us some leeway in our water and sewer work that we could have, monies that we may not have to pay out.
Secondly, under Public Works and Permanent Improvement, do you have the detail with regard to the project that we schedule for 2017? That's the, uh, beat, I lost the name of it.
Crescent Drive?
Crescent Drive Project. Is there, is there, will there be sufficient funds to do the Crescent Drive Project, given the reduction of $120,000 in the Public Works Permanent Improvement Fund?
Uh, no.
There will not be sufficient?
No, that's correct.
So, we may have to do that in two stages?
Well, what's being proposed, and I spoke with the Public Works Director about this on Friday, there won't be sufficient monies to do it in 2017, but he indicated because of the work that has to be done by the gas company to try and relocate the gas lines, he said that could take the better part of 2017 to do that anyway. So, we don't have sufficient funds to do the street work that needs to be done as part of that project in 2017. The estimate that he provided was, two years ago, was $730,000. The amount that he talked about this year as part of the Budget and Finance Committee meetings was about $700,000. And we don't have all that work, but it would be, we would be dependent upon the gas company completing their work before we do ours. So, and he said that that would be a major undertaking, and we have to have the completed plans and specifications to the gas company before they can even start their work. That's one of their requirements.
Well, they...
We don't envision that happening in 2017.
They'll be taking and moving their gas lines because of the improvements that we'll be making, and so we need to get those taken care of. And are we, are we set with our own water and sewer lines? Because it appeared that we're going to lower the road some inches and/or more, and so just wondering if that's going to, if we're going to have to do any additional infrastructure improvements there.
Well, we will, not to the main water line or the main sewer line, but he indicated that the services, I believe, that are east of the road surface might all have to be lowered as part of the reduction in the road surface. I believe at one point, it was going to be perhaps as much as a three-foot reduction in elevation, so...
That's the private services on the, on the east side of the, of the road?
That's correct. That's what he reported.
So, likely then that we would possibly do those in 2017, and that would then put the project to finish that Crescent Drive improvements in 2018?
Yes. The plan was to do the road improvement work in 2018. Whether or not the services can be done in 17, I'm not certain, because it's dependent on when the gas company can complete their work in lowering the gas line before we can work on the water services. And that's how it was explained to me.
And the budget media, whether you actually had it scheduled for 18?
This year he did. Last year, it was proposed to do it in 17, so it's being pushed off here, which is a disappointment to me.
Or me?
Because that money got moved, or we used it for other things, but I know this year it was for 18 when they come in with the budget. Yes.
Further questions or discussions with regard to the resolution or the budget? Hearing done, then the Chair would call the question on the adoption of the resolution.
Aye.
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 No.
No vote yes, motion is carried with four, four, and one against, or one opposed. Motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the preliminary budget and levy are adopted.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to thank the council. I, I know it's difficult weighing through these issues, and the budget is, is in part a reflection of our priorities as a council, and obviously, there's differences of opinion about that. I did look at the partnership agencies. I considered reducing all of them, but that really spreads the pain around. And if you look at percentage reductions, some of them are only being reduced $250, others, it was over $1,000. It seemed to be more appropriate, particularly given Councilor Jax's concerns, to make those reduction in the partnership agencies with the Borderlands Substance Abuse Court. The total amount is, with Second Creek, is $135,000. That's nearly a 6 percent, equivalent to a 6 percent levy for us. And given the amount of work that we need to do with all of our improvements over time, I think it's something that we want to consider or reexamine is, how do we want to continue funding these partnership organizations? You know, the Citizens for BACUS was a $5,000 reduction over what they had asked for last year. We had made that reduction. It's the same as what we ultimately funded, but the Chambers was about $590 less than it normally is. We had reduced the Bronco Foundation Museum and then increased it to what we've been funding it historically at the $34,000. But I think the council really needs to, we as a, as a city, need to consider how these partnership organizations fit into the core things that we need to do as a city government, particularly when we've, I think, as part of our capital improvement planning this fall, which I still hope to try and finish before we adopt the final budget. In December, we're going to find that there's a lot of equipment acquisition, but moreover, some infrastructure improvements that we need to do, and it's going to be hard to raise money on a pay-as-you-go basis to do some of that. We'll know a little bit more later in this fall, but I just, I think we deserve seriously about how we, how we prioritize our expenditures in future years.
Thank you. I think the, the 5 percent increase is certainly necessary to attempt to maintain the infrastructure of the city. I think, I'm not sure that we're not going behind. I think we'll know better now that we have a finance director to help sort some of these out. But it just seems to me that our overall infrastructure is, and I hear that from citizens that are concerned about some of the avenues and some of the other streets in the community that need to be improved, as well as the work that needs to be done in our water systems and tanks. So, I just think the 5 percent is, is very much needed. Certainly, more, more is needed, but trying to also balance the needs of the city...
trying to also balance the needs of the city with the needs of individuals, I think the 5 percent is reasonable. I want to thank you on behalf of the council, I want to thank Betty Bergstrom and the, all of our entire staff for their work on their budgets. It was a good, good process and very well done. Thank you. Anything further to come before this meeting, we'll stand adjourned.